United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason to struggle.
Before we get started here, I have something I want to read. I'd like everybody to listen real close. The Board would like to remind everyone in attendance that to avoid violations of individual rights or privacy, a member of the public wishing to address the Board will not be allowed to make comments about any student, staff member, or member of the general public during his or her designated time to speak. Policy fourteen twenty F. It is important for all participants to remember that Board meetings are held in public but are not public meetings. Members of the public shall be recognized and allowed input during the meeting at the discretion of the chairperson. Policy fourteen forty one. At regular meetings, the Board shall not, the Board shall allot a maximum of three minutes to hear persons who desire to make comments to the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall sign up with the presiding officer or designate before the meeting begins and shall indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. Complaints and concerns from which other resolution channels are provided shall be directed through those channels. The presiding officer or designate shall determine whether a person who wishes to address the Board has attempted to solve a matter administratively. Policy seventeen hundred, uniform complaint procedure. If not, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy to seek resolution before bringing the matter to the Board at a subsequent meeting. Audience participation at a Board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a Board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the Board unless recognized by the presiding officer. No presentation shall exceed five minutes. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views to the Board. Okay, we'll continue on. Do you have any recognition of individual delegations of correspondence? There are no correspondence. Okay, we'll move on to public comment again, a public comment session. A public comment is limited to items that are not listed on the agenda. Anybody like any public comments this time? Carrie?
This is in response to the trophy issue. I request the Board Forum Committee to come up with the solutions for this issue.
Carrie, I've been there after a week. That's an item on the agenda.
Is it?
We'll talk about it then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just have a letter that I wanted to present to the Board members, so I thought you'd do that at this time.
Okay.
Oh, you have the actual?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have one too. That was, it's not for me, but someone just wanted it to the Board.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any further public comment this time, came to items not listed on the agenda?
Andy, I just got one comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
I asked to be on the agenda. I asked twice to be on the agenda. And the topic that was supposed to be on the agenda was this. Discussion of trophy situation. And it ended up going on the agenda as Trophy Wall Committee, which I have no idea what that even is. So I guess my, the confusion in here right now is, why did you repeat the one part that only five people in here to speak? Or a group of five? Make that clear, because the problem is, Andy, what's, they don't know if it's public comment. We can't speak at public comment. And you go down here to where it's on the agenda. It's better not to put it on the agenda then.
And we'll come back until it's not on the agenda, until you listen to everybody here.
It shouldn't be just five people allowed to talk, because I was asked to be on the Board agenda. I asked twice to be on the Board agenda. And I asked at the last Board meeting. I couldn't speak at the last Board meeting because I found out October 9th. That's when things took place. And so I come in here and I gave public comment. That's all I could get, which was fine, I understood that. But then I asked to be on the Board agenda the very next day. And then two days after that, I went to confirm, am I on that Board agenda? All of a sudden I come and I see this on here. The Board agenda should have been discussion of the trophy situation. So that's part I don't understand. And I don't understand when you're saying five people can speak, that doesn't make sense. So I guess maybe could you clarify that for me? And why wasn't I on the Board agenda?
Well, reading we present this way, Mike. No official complaint was ever, nothing was ever put in writing? After legal counsel, this is how we decided to present. There was no, it's about this.
You gotta remember when they come up for election.
That's right.
Well, I'm just thinking, I was, I was on the agenda, I asked to be on the agenda.
But it's more that there's more than five people interested in one particular subject. In order to keep time moving along, so we don't have each person in here getting up and wanting to stop for three minutes or five minutes, so we can kind of keep things going and timely fast. So I don't seem to, we can't reach for one person.
Because there's more than five people that want to speak tonight. And they should have the right to speak.
They're all to speak.
And I also asked, why wasn't there a special Board meeting on this? And that was thrown under the, so I don't know why there wasn't even a special.
It wasn't thrown under the bus, Mike. We decided to do it this way, after discussion and legal advice, counsel on it, this is how we decided to do it. And it's up to the Board's discretion on how we present it. This is how it is, and this is how we're gonna do it.
Well, then we'll all come next month and take the, off the Board agenda and put it up there on.
We have it on the agenda here when we get down to it, we'll discuss it.
I know, but only, you're not allowing everybody to speak.
But everybody can speak for three minutes, it says.
Well, I don't know, that's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to clarify with you. I didn't, I didn't understand.
On different items, Karen. If everybody's talking on one separate item. Why did you read it?
Oh, baloney.
That's not the law.
Andy, what is your legal counsel defined as a delegation? Is it, anyone that's interested in a certain topic, or is it a, a group that has formed their own committee? What is your legal counsel defined as a delegation?
Well, I can't, with that right now, I can't say a word, a word off the top of my head. We have it right here, right in the school policy. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views to the Board.
Okay, that, that's okay.
So we can get in groups of five?
I am not, I'm not a delegation, I spoke to no one, so I'm gonna ask an individual to say my piece.
You want ten, ten groups of five out here, but one person, so we're not, not every, you can tell the person.
But more than, but more than five people can speak totally?
Yeah.
Okay, there. That's all I wanted to clear out, because I thought it was stated that only five people can speak. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear. But it's gonna be tough to get groups of five, I can't, I'm not.
Everybody's gonna be talking pretty much about the same topic.
That's fine, you better hear it.
That doesn't make them a delegation. You don't have a definition, you can't define somebody as a delegation.
Well, I want them to do a special meeting call.
We didn't believe there was need for it.
Come on.
Now, nobody get louder, we're not gonna get out of control here now, let's get that straight right off the bat. That's right.
Andy, can I ask you to repeat the part about, uh, there's not being public meetings, public meeting or something public?
It is important for all participants to remember that Board meetings are held in public but are not public meetings. Members of the public shall be recognized and allowed input during the meeting at the discretion of the chairperson. That's under policy fourteen forty one.
I was wondering, I was wondering what is considered a written complaint?
Seen there in policy book?
Would an article in the Pittsburgh Mail be a written complaint?
No, it has to be addressed to the school, it has to come in to Mrs. Wedge or, that's come in to.
My question is, if this is the law, why isn't it followed at every Board meeting? Why do we pick and choose when we follow laws? That's my question too.
Well, you have a point there. Not every meeting, and to me like this, you don't exactly, I'm sure that we ever follow.
If we had this attendance every meeting, we'd just have to follow them all every meeting.
You'd have to.
You have to follow it every meeting.
I have been at some key meetings, and they're not always, it isn't always followed. That's, it was just a question, because it's not, it's not consistent.
We're doing it this way to try to expedite things along, so we're not here, you know, we have other business to take care of tonight, so we're trying to get it all in. I don't think the meeting's individual person saying the same thing over and over and over.
How long have those policies been on the handbook?
They've been there for quite a while, um, they were on there before I got here. Adopted two thousand and two.
Adopted two thousand and two for fourteen twenty. Fourteen twenty.
Fourteen forty one was adopted in two thousand and one.
Two thousand and two, two thousand and one.
Thank you.
Two thousand and nine.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna talk about it, but we're gonna do it in orderly fashion. I'm not up there to say that, no, you're not gonna get, say anything, we'll get to it on the agenda item, but we're gonna do it in orderly fashion. Nobody, I'm not gonna put up with anybody jumping up and hollering and screaming, no propensity. So we'll talk about it when we get to it on the agenda item. But we'd like to have it, you know, there's certain ones, let's try to keep it to a, I think, I don't think everybody, single person here, everybody's got something to say, but I think it can be condensed a little bit, that's what we're getting at. Anything further in public comment? Carrie?
So, when you get to the trophy thing, the issue, people can, like me, can talk, if you, you're gonna let, like me, talk? Or just have my say instead of giving public comment?
Up there, we will, I'll give people, yes, talk.
Okay.
Not like we're not gonna, I'm not gonna say, no, you know, we're here to, we're gonna do it in an orderly fashion.
Because I'm not on the agenda, and that's why I thought I could talk in public comment, because I'm not on the agenda, so that's why. So if I'm not on it, then I can still talk.
That's why we put it in agenda item, load it down, or so we can limit to that, because we don't want to be talking about it on every issue.
Okay.
Get to it at one point, we're gonna discuss it, and we have other things to deal with tonight too. Anybody else, anything more in public comment? No more public comment at this time? Uh, let me know on the consent agenda. You had a chance to look everything over?
Yeah, we have, we just, we do our, you're gonna ask everyone to wait on that question.
Yeah, for the trophy.
Move it down there after the trophy.
Otherwise, everybody kind of clean right now.
So we're only, yeah, so we're accommodating, more than accommodating in my situation.
Still in agreement, discussion down.
So.
Any questions on the claim in a minute?
Where do you want to move that to, Brian? Do you wanna wait for consent agenda altogether?
We can do it now, because we've decided to have you.
So you just want claims and minutes? Alright, I, I move to accept claims and minutes as presented.
You have second? Second. It's been first and second to approve the consent agenda, the claim in a minute. Public comment? We have none, all in favor? Opposed?
Paul, do you want to all as one motion? I make a motion to accept Patty Bingo's resignation and to declare the position vacant on post for a, for president.
Second? Uh, it's been first and second to accept Patty Bingo's resignation from the school board. Any public comment?
I see that you responded and thanked her for her time. Just moving back, I mean, that was her, oh, didn't he?
But yes, we did send a call.
I would like to say, it's been a real pleasure serving on the Board with Patty Bingo the last several years. I think she did a really great job, she's really knowledgeable in school functions, I guess, being a clerk for a long time. And I think she knows a lot about school finances and all that, and she's been really a real asset to us the last several years. I hate to have to accept her resignation, but I know she's got really good reasons for doing it. Wish her all the best in the future, her endeavors and stuff. All in favor or not? Have you got any public comment at this time? There's no public comment? All in favor of accepting Patty Bingo's resignation? All opposed? Motion passed?
We did that in a motion, right? We already did a motion.
We're good, that was for me to finish, yes, now we're on. We're good.
I helped you out there, Andy.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Are we approving her name, should we, about how many?
We're sorry, she hasn't done it yet.
You're waiting?
Because I, I need to open it.
Right. I make a motion to approve Rhonda Brown for our, for substitute.
I'll second. Okay, it's been first and second to accept a substitute teacher application. Any public comment? No public comment, any further Board discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, on to the old business. Trophy Wall Committee. Before we get going on this, I'm gonna ask one thing. Whoever wants to get up and speak, we're gonna ask you to come up, stand up here at the table and state your name. We'll give you, you've got roughly three minutes to speak, so. Who would like to be first? Mr. Don Anderson, come on up.
With a wife who was superintendent, I'd like to reinforce really what Andy said. I know there are some hot people in this room that can get flared up real easy. I know most of the people in this room, nothing is ever accomplished if things get out of control. So, try to keep that within. I thank the Board for their time. Sorry, I don't know all Board members, or how long you've lived in this community. My name is Don Anderson, and I'm proud to say that from nineteen seventy to nineteen ninety-six, I was a teacher and coach here. I taught a total of thirty-eight years in three school systems, under six superintendents. So I have a pretty good idea, with one of them being my wife, the function of the school board and what goes on in the school. I also want to make clear that when I'm talking community here tonight, I'm talking of Vando and Helvill and Hall and Rock Creek, because some outstanding people have come from those regions too. I have my family here, both my children left to school here, and I buried my first wife here. I know firsthand about the integrity of this community and how supportive they are. Although we moved from Mizzou, we've stayed in contact with the school through the newsletter and newspaper. I followed athletes all the time, and I was quite proud when I found out we had a cooking class down here. We never forgot this community, nor did our family, and our memorial scholarship has given over sixteen thousand dollars to graduating students at Drummond High School since nineteen ninety. I'm extremely proud that I brought a third sport to this school, namely track, and that's why I'm pissed. This entire trophy disaster is a kick in the gut. I've had messages left on my answering machine, texts and emails. People at church asking me, people at Gris Tailgate asking me, what's going on in Drummond? Honestly, I don't know. I don't do Facebook, but I can't imagine what's going on there. All I know is the graduates of this school have been riled up. I was glad to get a call about this meeting, because I already thought you already had it, and I missed it. I do not prescribe to the notion that there is no room. We ran out of room several times while I was here, always found a place for trophies, and that was before you had a brand new gym. And you have to be careful not to display all trophies. If a third place trophy is the first time in school history that you got that trophy in that sport, it should be displayed. And I'm kind of from the old section, but we also had to knock heads with French Town and Florence in our conference. Had a little different day and age then. I know the people of Drummond would never have supported what took place. All schools have policies for disposal of obsolete material. I don't consider trophies obsolete. Forget sports. Those trophies represent the history of this community, the families, athletes, coaches, bus drivers, volunteers, that all work together to help teams achieve their goals. Man, how many times on trophies would you walk through and see someone from Park, Bradshaw, Lacy, Coughlin, Maddox Family? That's a legacy, and a legacy has been destroyed. Those trophies were the property of Drummond High School, and I will tell you, very expensive property. If vandals broke into this school and destroyed some desks, and the authorities ended up catching them, what would your position be? I think there'd be hell to pay, and I'm pretty sure you would be demanding accountability and restitution. It seems to me the solution's easy. A serious mistake was made, you correct mistakes. Lastly, if you take no action on the disposal of these trophies, and it's okay with you, this Saturday, when the Titans win the state football championship, no pressure, DC, walk out onto the field, congratulate the players, and in the midst of their excitement, huddle them up and tell them you're not accepting the trophy because it doesn't matter. Thank you for your time.
Andy, buddy, should I go first?
Yeah, come on, Mike.
I don't know where to stand.
Oh.
Can I stand over here?
I'm right up here, yeah.
Oh, but you get over. Oh, boy. I want you to just go back and get a little, go, go through with some of the facts of what happened with the trophies and then what's happened since. But after the trophies, it's plain and simple, during the summer, a hundred and sixty-two trophies were dismantled. Statues were thrown away, the pieces that connect the state of Montana to the back of the wood thrown away. The place, the plates were placed on a sheet of plywood. And all the wood to the trophies were sent down to the shop class to be used for projects when school started. The wood was being used up by the shop class, it only stopped because people in the school and community found out what was taking place.